...in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Meeting number twenty-eight is now called to order. Would you up this in and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, let's do roll call.
Phillips?
Here.
Graham Murray?
Here.
McCambo?
Here.
Rinker?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
You forgot millionaire Wenzel. Oh, forget it, we'll deal with him later. All right. Uh, all, uh, first, uh, on the agenda tonight, we have some, uh, Mayor's Awards. Um, and I really look forward to this part of, uh, of the meetings. And we don't, uh, we just don't pick people at random and throw, uh, darts at a dartboard. These are people that, uh, stand out amongst the peers, stand out in the community, and we just like to recognize them. So, uh, tonight, we have three recipients that we get to recognize tonight. It is my privilege. I will go ladies first. So tonight, the first one I'm going to recognize, uh, is a lady that's just involved in all sorts of things. She's got her hands in everything, and she's all about Burlington, uh, her and her husband. But it's not about her husband tonight, it's all about you, Carol. So. Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. You are an example to your community, neighborhood, family, and workplace. You helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On February nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, this Mayor's Award is presented to Carol Barnes. Come on, damn. Your husband's watching, give me a hug. You guys want in on this?
Sure.
I'm not very good at this. I usually cry when I talk about things I care about. Burlington's a very special place, we're lucky to be here. And we plan to hang around for a long time.
Great.
Thank you.
Uh, the next gentleman that I'll be recognizing tonight is, uh, not a Burlingtonian. Um, he's a transplant, and now he has become a Burlingtonian. And I'll tell you what, I was born and raised here, and I know people that have been, uh, here most of their lives, and they just don't appreciate what they have. And sometimes you get, uh, a different set of eyes that come in and see what the community is all about. And they, they embrace it, and they jump in, uh, feet-first. Uh, this next gentleman, I, I believe that you've done that. And, uh, um, I want to recognize you tonight. You're, uh, we're blessed to have you, and I hope that you stick around as well. So. And you've got a hot wife. Did I say that on?
It's, it's recorded.
Okay. No shame. She's hot, Vince. All right. Uh, listen, uh, be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. You're an example to your community, your neighborhood, your family, and workplace. You, my friend, helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On February nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, this Mayor's Award is presented to Vince Copeland. Come on.
You gonna break stand-up here, so you taller?
We're pre- we're pre- yes, right, right. Let me have you hold that, and, uh, let's go. Let's go, okay. Here we go. A little bit, here we go. And snapping away, got about five. Well, sir, would you please have a word?
Uh, I'm not too good at having, uh, just a word, uh, so I'm gonna try to keep it short. Uh, thanks to, uh, the City Council and the city of Burlington. And, uh, yes, I am a transplant, been here, uh, just a little over thirty years. And it is, it's home now, and it feels like it. So I am, I'm pleased to be in Burlington, pleased to lend a hand and make this a better place to live.
All right.
You do.
Uh, I just got reminded Easter egg hunt from South Hill Neighborhood Association. Uh, April twelfth, all right? I gotta get it right, April thirteenth.
Thirteen.
April thirteenth.
It's always good to have back up my friend. Okay. And this last award that I'm going to be giving out, um, it, it's a, it's a funny story. When I first got on City Council, I really didn't know a lot about, uh, politics, what I was getting into, so I was learning on the, on the way, but I kinda had an idea, that the Chamber was bad. You know, and, uh, um, all these bad people down at the Chamber doing all these terrible things in the city of Burlington. And, uh, well, I'll tell ya, I, I come to find out that they were wonderful people down at the Chamber, and they were doing wonderful things in the city of Burlington. And we were on the same page, working from a different angle, but we were all trying to meet in the middle. And I got a chance to get to, to meet you, and to work with you, um, to see you in action, to travel with you. Uh, uh, we've, we got a chance to, uh, to get it in, my friend, and we have been blessed to have you here in the city of Burlington. We're gonna miss you, my friend, we are, we are definitely gonna miss ya down at the Chamber. But we, we expect that you'll be sticking around, but you've helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. I'm glad to be giving you this one tonight. So, be it known. On behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your leadership during difficult times, your commitment to your community and your vision and achievement is declared worthy of mention and honor. You, my friend, helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, this Mayor's Award is presented to Jay Hutch. Come on, man. Mr. President.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I got on the wrong side.
What you going?
Probably balance out. Try to give you a couple of taps, or no?
Not enough.
Or no? Come on, Jim.
Yeah, come on, James.
Come on.
Get some of this, James.
Don't do that, don't do that. Okay, right here, guys. Here we go, and snapping away, great job.
Well, thank you so much, I'm, uh, humbled to receive this. I, I can't say enough thanks to the, the people here, uh, the, the, uh, the employees and board members that I've had the privilege to work with. And, you know, one of the things I, I love so much about this community is that we, we have great times, and we have times that are rough, but this community never gives up. It always has an eye for the future, and it's not afraid to do the tough things, uh, that need to happen to keep this place a great place to live, work, and play. It has been an honor and privilege to serve you, the folks of this community, and our members. And, uh, uh, thanks for, uh, allowing me to serve you.
And at this time, as promised, I'm kicking you guys out of here. And take millions with ya. Thanks for coming down, guys. All right. All right, it's thinned out, but Leon is still here. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Give me one second for your audience. All right. Uh, next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed under item one, consent agenda having been discussed or considered to be routine by the City Council will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll, and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have six resolutions. First is resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Number two is a resolution approving a contract for towing services between the city of Burlington and Mike Campbell's Towing. Number three is a resolution approving urban revitalization tax exemptions pursuant to chapter four-zero for state code of Iowa tax abatements. The fourth is a resolution approving engagement letter with Piper Jaffray and Company to serve as underwriter for issuance of sewer revenue, uh, but thea, but thea, but thea, but that's all, folks. A resolution approving engagement letter with Piper Jaffray and Company to serve as underwriter for issuance of sewer revenue refunding bonds, series two nineteen B. Uh, number five is a resolution approving extension of contract for real estate services with Terrace Real Estate Group, LLC, for marketing and selling the Burlington Police Department facility located at four twenty-four North Third Street. And then the, the sixth is a resolution authorizing the city of Burlington to hold the Great River Bridge race. We also have some hearings set. Uh, the first is a consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand nineteen Locust Sewer Separation Project, March fourth. The second is a consideration of fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget, March fourth. And then the third is consideration of a sewer revenue loan agreement in a principal amount not to exceed six million five hundred thousand dollars. That will be on March eighteenth. We also have some appointments, Mayor Prost.
Yes, we have one appointment for the City Planning Commission for Becky Anderson, and one for the tree advisory board of Scott Sizer. Thank you both for your service on those, on those boards.
All right. Anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed? Shayhan.
Leon Shayhan, eighteen twenty-one Mount Pleasant Street. I'd like to take off number three and number five.
Anybody else? I see none. Counsel?
None.
Got a motion?
Your Honor, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with removing items number three and number four.
He said five.
Or, I'm sorry, three and five.
Second.
Moved in second, Kathleen.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Ordinances.
I have a, uh, motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter one twenty-eight tree service business of the city of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Mr. Tisland.
No changes from the previous reading, uh, this just, uh, updates what the safety standards are, um, referencing the American National Standards Institute, uh, for, uh, those licensees that are, uh, operating tree service business, and then taking out some of the requirements for, um, the application, uh, for tree service business, so trying to clean that up.
Right on.
Is this the one that we elected to have a final reading on?
That's correct. Where you talking about waiving the final reading?
Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Your Honor, I have a motion to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter one twenty-eight tree service business of the city of Burlington Municipal Code to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter one twenty-eight tree service business of the city of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen, let's vote on the amendment.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote as amended.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Well done. Number two.
I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter one fifty-one trees of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tisland.
Again, no changes from the previous reading. This again is, uh, just referencing the American National Standards Institute, the ANSI A three hundred for tree pruning standards.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
I have a motion to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter one fifty-one trees of the Burlington Municipal Code to read as follows. For waiver of the preliminary adoption, preliminary consideration, and adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter one fifty-one trees of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen, let's vote on the amendment.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote as amended.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Well done. Number three, moving right along.
Your Honor, I have a motion for the final adoption of an ordinance amending ordinance number three-three-two-three, amending section F applicability of the plan and section L, application requirements of the urban revitalization plan for the city of Burlington, Iowa. I need a second. Second, sorry.
Again, uh, no changes from the previous two readings. This again, uh, just, uh, for the application deadline mirrors, uh, more of what state code, uh, lists, um, for their application deadline for a tax, uh, abatement application, and then, uh, references multi-residential as one of the, um, qualifying, uh, classes of property for an application.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
I don't have any.
I have none.
Covered it.
Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number one.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the two thousand nineteen De Edwin and Gladys White Park renovations.
Second.
Uh, we received four bids, uh, for this work. Uh, we previously submitted this, or put this out for bid and did not receive any bids, so we're, uh, happy to see, uh, four bids come in, with the low bid, uh, from Four Seasons Excavating at, uh, just over forty-six, forty-six thousand five hundred. Um, this work includes, uh, removing existing F asphalt, uh, surfacing in playground areas, um, grading the open playfield, and then, uh, bringing in new, uh, access, uh, sidewalk or pedestrian access from Angular Street and around the playground area. Um, we will be installing a playground after completion of that, uh, portion of the project's done, uh, separately. Uh, the plan is to have this done, uh, by the Juneteenth event here this summer, so.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Just one note, funds are from a well-marked grant that we received and from starker funds.
Questions, Counsel?
I don't have any.
Okay, Kathleen, let's take a vote.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. Number three.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving urban revitalization tax exemptions pursuant to chapter four oh four of the state code of Iowa, uh, its tax abatements.
Second.
Mr. Shayhan. Love the jacket, by the way. You know, that's one of my favorites.
I know. Question here is, how much and to whom?
James? Stephanie?
Um, I did get this posted on the website, it's under the finance. The five-year, um, that's not gonna give you individual properties. This is the current year. I can send you the spreadsheet that has the detailed properties that you could look up, like on GIS. But, um, I did.
Well, so, the, the real number we're talking about here is, uh, this number right there, the taxes. I, I guess, when, when I look at, uh, consent agenda, passing a half a million dollars in tax breaks shouldn't be something that's on the consent agenda. I know this is a done deal, but for transparency, I just don't like giving away half a million dollars sight unseen to the public. This deserves public discussion, and this should be ma- made available in the regular agenda. I, I, I just think this is wrong.
Um, I can appreciate that. We've already been through this dance, but I can still appreciate that, I hear where you're coming from.
I do wanna say that it was discussed last week in the work session. And, and fairly in-depth, and, and made available to the public through the city's website over the last week. So, it's not like it's being hidden, it's just, it is on the consent agenda because we discussed it.
Well, you know, I've had a problem for years with this. Basically, I've been fighting the same thing that a certain freshman congressman from New York has made a big hit on for the past twenty years. The news media does not report this. In the last twenty to twenty-five years, we spent, we're committed to spend two hundred and fifty million dollars, and we don't have anything to show for it on economic development. We keep doing this, we give tax breaks to increase the tax base. I don't see how giving away tax dollars is gonna increase the tax base. So you can carry on with your motion, then we'll go to item five.
Okay, well, you stay right there, sir. Let me make sure, any, any other questions from the audience? Counsel?
None here.
Okay. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the extension of a contract for real estate services with Terrace Real Estate Group, LLC, for marketing and selling the Burlington Police Department facility located at four-two-four North Third Street.
Second.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Well, I don't think I'll be alone in saying this. If that building was unsafe to have our police department in, that building should come down. Period. We, we shouldn't be selling it, it should come down.
Yeah, I think that when we, uh, went through the process of first time with the develop- with the developer, uh, it required a, or, did it, was rehab even an option that was listed with the, with the sale? But it had to come up to safety standards before the, the property would transfer over. And if we do go through, through a sale on this, it will likely be the same type of a standard, where we're not gonna turn it over and, and let, until it's either demoed or rehabbed. Because we do recognize the issue with that.
Problem is, if you look at the north side of that building, it's already started coming in on itself. You should get it over with.
I think you're right, Leon, I think before it could pass a final sale, it would have to have inspections conducted that passed. That was satisfactory to both parties.
I, I don't think there's any inspection needed. I, I think, just go to the demolition. We're gonna get somebody killed if you don't get that building down.
And to your point, we do have, uh, with the bond issue that's being issued here in the next couple of months, five hundred thousand will be set aside for that demo. This is a process with, uh, uh, we had a request from Southeast Iowa Regional Planning, which will come up on, I think, the next works, work session. Um, to do a, a last ditch, ditch effort to see if we can find someone that we could market that to that would be similar to what happened with, uh, the group that was looking at this, uh, for a demo. I don't know that we have a whole lot of hope that we're gonna get anything out of it, uh, but if we, if we, if we did, that would be great, but otherwise, we do recognize, we do have that need to get a demo.
Well, and I think that's important to know that we're trying to sell the building as-is, because if we weren't try, if we demoed it before even trying to sell it, we would have someone, someone else such as yourself who's on the other side of the fence saying, why didn't you try to sell that, why'd you spend five hundred thousand? So I can understand why we're...
Tell them, tell them to go downtown and look at it about high noon.
Yeah, we'll send them away. Thank you for the question, though.
Point, point of order before you vote, should I stand up here because I do have comments in the next session?
Uh, yeah, you can stay, you can stay there. Let's go ahead and, you guys good?
Yeah.
All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. Now we are finished with this part of the meeting. I'm gonna remind everybody, and Mr. Shayhan, these are, uh, comments from the audience and not questions, so, uh, please end it, and, uh, end your statement with period, not a question mark. That would be appreciated. And if you do have any questions, after we close out, you can have access to anybody that you want to. Nobody's gonna turn away somebody that looks like that and a jacket like that. So, please.
I, I've been doing this long enough, I know, period instead of question mark. I have a handout.
Mayor, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. One of the reasons I'm such an opponent of all the economic development we do is in front of you. The functionality of, uh, job services, uh, job listing is declining. That's another whole subject, and you don't have time for that in my three minutes allotted. But you'll find there that you have supposedly nine hundred and sixty-five jobs in Southeast Iowa. And this is a list that the Chamber of Commerce holds up that we've done so good with economic development that, that we have a worker shortage. Well, if you use the functionality of their program, on the second page there, what I did is I did a search for jobs that paid fifteen dollars an hour. In all of Southeast Iowa, according to this program that the Chamber depends on, there's only eighteen living wage jobs. Then you hear how we've created all these high-quality jobs that require exceptional training. And I, I qualify those jobs as jobs that pay twenty-five dollars an hour. That's your third page. In all of Southeast Iowa, there's only three jobs that pay twenty-five dollars an hour or more. One of them's with the city of Burlington, one of them is a roll-off driver for one of the waste management services, and another's an automotive technician. None of which you've devoted economic development money to. Leon, I, never mind, I can't comment, I'm sorry. So what I'm, what I'm trying to say here is leave the investment banking to the investment bankers. None of you have a degree in that. Even, even the gal in New York that's criticized, she has an economics degree and graduated cum laude. I don't know that any of you do. It's, you know, I want, I'm not anti-government, I've been accused of that. I want you to stick with streets, sewers, water, police, fire, and the like. Stay away from economic development. We, we've been doing this for better than a quarter of a century, and this is all you have to show? This is really pathetic. Stop wasting my money.
Mr. Shayhan, thank you for coming down. It's always a pleasure seeing you, sir. Anybody else from the audience, questions or concerns? Super. How are you doing?
Freddie Starwood, five seventeen South Seventh Street, Burlington, Iowa. I come in peace.
Somebody break the mic, I don't break the mic. That's a verse.
I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm very grateful and appreciative, and, and I come to, uh, thank you firsthand for your tremendous support to the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Celebration in, uh, January, and I hate that you have, had to leave. We had a great speaker, Dr. Ash, and, uh, we had a, a great supper, and we saw where you missed it, the supper. So hopefully next time that you'll be able to stay. But I wanna thank you personally, and I appreciate you. I do wanna say, I'm glad to see that, uh, work is continuing on down at, uh, Gladys White and, uh, Deven White Park. So, peace, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down, and thank you for the compliment. Make sure you kiss your wife for me, you're really married up, I'm proud of you. All right. Anybody else with questions or concerns? Yes, sir.
My name's Michael Tomes, I live at eight hundred Hedge Avenue. I've got, like, every time it rains, two, three inches, I get water backing up in my personal sewer, into my basement.
What's your address?
Eight hundred Hedge Avenue. I called and complained, and the guy down there at the Waters Works, he said that it was gonna get fixed, or it was on the process, but then he called me back a couple of months later and said that he was misspoke because, like- because, like, I'm not sure exactly, but the sewer to the, it'd be the south, was the one getting fixed, and then mine was on the south sewer or whatever, South Street Sewer. And, like, I keep getting water backing up in my basement, and I gotta clean it out. And it's like raw sewage that backs up into my basement every time we get two or three inches of water, or rain or whatever. And, like, I called him to ask what was going on, I don't know, it was like a week or two ago. And he said that, he couldn't tell me. He said, "You guys skipped mine. You skipped South Street and moved to Locust," which I heard you say something about earlier. And I'd like to know, kind of, I mean, obviously, it's probably money or something to that sort, why you skipped the South Street and moved to the Locust. But I'd like to know when mine's gonna get fixed, 'cause I'm tired of having to clean up my basement every time we get two, three inches of rain.
Can Nick, uh...
Yeah, well, Nick can come up and talk a little bit about what's going on, but I don't know that we know anything about specifics on that. We can look into it. And I think Nick could probably talk with you afterwards, get your contact info.
I'd just like to know, like, when it's gonna be up for South Street to get fixed or something like that.
The difference between the base, those are all overall basin fixes, which I don't know if that's relative to what you have for an issue, and that's one that you might want to talk with Nick if there's some issue with the existing system that can be dealt with. But Maslow as a whole, Market Angular South Locust is a whole basin, and we have to do a sewer separation project on it overall. The first piece of that that we're doing is Locust, and the reason that it was chosen is it was the smallest portion of it, and at that, it's a five-and-a-half-million-dollar project.
Well, like I said, I figured it was money, so...
Yeah, so, the overall fixes, the south, I'm not sure of the timing on, and it's something that we're still in negotiations with the Department of Natural Resources on when we'll get to that for the overall work to be done. Now, again, that's where you might want to talk with Nick and see if there's something that can be done in the meantime for that area to get an understanding of what's going on there.
When I called and complained, they came and they, like, blew out the sewer system and stuff, but, like, I called them back, and I was like, "I don't see how you think that's gonna be kosher, 'cause that's not gonna fix the problem." You know, like, that's not gonna keep two or three inches from going back up into my basement, you know?
Well, if it's sometimes, and I don't, again, you need to speak with him and let them take a look at it, but places where we have low points in the system, one of the things that we do recommend for folks is a backflow preventer to be put in, and it's oftentimes the only thing you really can do for that. But, again, please, make sure that you get a chance to talk to Nick afterwards and see if there, what other options there might be available for you.
I'm a little slow, Nick.
I got it.
That's alright. M-I-C-A-E-L-T-H-O-M-E-S.
Yes.
That's it. Thanks.
Michael, make sure you speak with that gentleman right there with the foster grants on. He'll get you squared away.
Okay. Don't you say foster grants. He's too old. He doesn't know what that means.
He's too young.
Too young. Too young.
I don't know what that means. Yeah, you don't have foster? Is that you behind those foster kids?
Sorry.
Young kids. Alright. Anybody else from the audience, questions or concerns? And I'm really sorry about your problem, but make sure you, make sure you speak. There's nothing else, and thank you for coming down in peace. We appreciate seeing you in peace as well. Alright, Mr., where's Tisdale?
He's gone.
Okay, dip down on me. Kathleen? Okay, peanut butter?
More snow on the way, and those of you that know me know I'm an avid cross-country skier, and I'm tired of the snow, so enough is enough. I'm done skiing for the season. Put 'em away. I'm ready for some sunshine, so be safe.
Alright, counselor?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Mayor Prost?
I've got nothing this evening. Thank you.
You got nothing? Okay, counselor? Go Hawks. Alright, go Hawks. They're going. James?
Actually, I don't think I have anything.
Oh, my goodness. James has nothing? Back it up. Well, I do. It's a long time ago, back in 1969. It was a really, really cold winter.
You were born?
Yeah, yeah, okay. No, I've got nothing. We're good to go. Thank you, guys, for the time tonight. Can I get a motion? Move the clothes?
Second?
Moved in second by all of us. We're ready to get out of here. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCampbell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, everybody. Good night. This meeting's adjourned. Come in, guys.